So happy.
Going to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hope I've ever told you guys, but I did actually get a compliment to do that there. I guess their agency that don't, that's kind of disappointing here. Anyway, uh, everyone had a chance to review the agenda. Are there any conflicts of interest or objections to the agenda that's posted? It's too short.
You think it's too short? You must not.
Okay, here none of the agenda standards approved is read. Madam Auditor, if you'd please read us the minutes of the last meeting.
December fifth, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rosberg, Chairman presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozark, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hayden, to approve following resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, resolution transferring funds. Um, the transfers in the amount of one million three hundred eighty-five thousand transferred from rural basic into the secondary roads fund. Voting aye, Schultz, Dozark, Rosberg, Mulbauer, and Hayden. Motion passed unanimously. Craig Loewen, Hoffman Agency introduced Chris Blake, uh, to the board. Uh, Chris is replacing Craig at the Hoffman Agency. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozark, to approve the liquor license for Copper Ridge Farm LLC. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned at ten thirty-two AM. Agents for the next meeting are posted available to courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM for seating in the next meeting.
Are there any additions, corrections, or objections to the minutes? And I'll stand as red, written in red. There are, ma'am.
Yep, thank you.
A couple of things that I'm kind of snooping through here. And after Gene on the rotation to the chairman. Uh, Terry's got a question in here. Who will be next, twenty twenty-five and then twenty twenty-six? Uh, it'll be one of you two who'll be next in line.
Can we make a motion to approve?
Approve.
Up to a point.
You don't really do that until the first meeting. We just need a heads up. We, yeah, we need a consensus to be able to have those documents all prepared for that first meeting. And then you're next. Uh, here to warm up to the idea.
I'll be vice next year when.
Yeah, you'll be Gene's vice.
And then twenty twenty-five, I'll be chair and Craig will be vice.
There you go.
Right. And then twenty-six, Craig will be chair.
And who knows?
Kyle would be back to vice.
Probably, yeah.
Either way, we're all gonna get our shot at this one.
Yes, if you want, and some have declined entirely. So, I mean, you know.
You can't do that. No.
Well, no, you can't.
How's that?
Thank you so much.
For example, they're declined from it.
Yeah, one of his last years or whatever. Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
His last year he did. Okay, uh, I see where somebody left this open to EMA. Is that somebody you had?
Oh, I just had a question if that, uh, fee for the brief, the save.
Save.
Is annual?
No, that, that is clearing up their, when they did the, what do they call that? The groundwork?
All the grounding.
Yeah, some of those last services.
What did they call it?
Part of the tower construction then.
Part of the tower.
Yeah, that's kind of basically to finish them.
I thought the way they divided it out, it looked like maybe it was a fee they were charging.
No, that's for each tower site.
Each tower site, they build it separately. So we can keep track of it.
That was the only question that I, kind of hit me like, eleven thousand dollars.
And then Raycom was the first installment towards them.
Yeah, some of those should be ending in Raycom. I'll build up steam, so.
But I did get them to, where they'll build the last two in our next building year.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, that was my question. It's like, how fast is that gonna transpire and how fast? Do we need those funds available?
Supposedly, the last two, which one, the last one's gonna be just a ministry, comparatively speaking.
Yeah, exactly.
But, uh, the last one, and they were gonna do it in June. I asked them to push it into July for obviously this budget here. And that helps us spread that out over an extra budget here. So Craig will have to make sure he's got that in his budget. And I did have some word with Craig about some of the.
Greg? Sorry, yeah, it's okay. I think I knew who you were talking about, but I don't want, yeah.
I wondered why they were.
I was thinking about. Anyway, uh, had words with him about some of his expenditures, just to make sure that his board is aware of some of the things that he's doing. And, uh, everything, you know, had any question here that came up was, uh, safety related. One thing was a monitor for the pickup camera forward. Um, just about every truck in America is going to a forward facing camera. Basically, it helps, it helps you in the case of a lawsuit, you know, and it's a government vehicle. I ain't too sure that all of them shouldn't have it in there, you know. I think Paul's done it.
They, they did have it one time ago.
I would, I could see just standard in all vehicles.
Standard operating procedure?
Just to keep you out of trouble. I, you know, and it's even like with our trucks, we do so much now that, you know, once upon a time, nobody liked to have the, somebody watching over their shoulder, and that's how they viewed that. It wasn't looking at your driver. They do have cameras now. They're looking right at the driver all the time. I don't want anybody watching me pick my nose for goodness sake.
The new safety features in the vehicles have that. I know Subaru have, have that, has that safety feature already involved.
Where it watches.
Got a camera watching you. And if it appears that you haven't responded or moved, it'll beep that and say stop and drink coffee or something.
You look down too long, anything.
My wife's car does that. Take a break.
Yep, that's what it says. You want coffee cupped up, pops up on the screen.
Kind of crazy, isn't it? But in any, in any event, for a safety issue, and it wasn't, that one wasn't dreadfully expensive, but another purchase that he made that was actually, we've got to make some clarifications with that because there'll be insurance issues and, and other things. So that, we're, I'm, we're working our way through that one.
I saw.
It's a necessary element, do I believe, to our county services, but in any event. Uh, just give you a heads up since we were on that subject going over. Anybody have anything else on the expense report? Thanks, Don. Uh, just, I assume we're getting that in order because of the new year, but also this is the one that would do the pipeline stuff, right?
There's some blank spaces in there. Yeah.
Okay.
Still.
That will be kind of critical going forward. All right, I think I took care of that.
And it always needs review because.
Who are we listening on?
You're only missing, you're missing like number seven of realtors.
Yeah, realtor number seven, city property owners number seven, and that's it.
That should be an easy one.
Do we have any of these, are all these people still in Crawford County?
City property owners, Adam Hyder. He's Slusway.
But he didn't, no, it don't matter. It don't matter what community.
He's got to be in the county.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
She live in the city of Slusway?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
Yeah, it don't have to be, yep.
Adam, thanks, Dave.
And that'd be somebody that would understand some stuff. I mean, he would, he would be, he would be good on that. Says, I wonder if we know anybody on this board that could speak to him on our behalf.
Maybe. Harry, will you call him?
I'll call him.
He's gonna answer me. He never has.
Realtors, let's see, we've got Jim Brown, John Walsh.
Maybe he'll talk to you.
Rita.
Maybe.
Burnell, Tom, and Keith Kirkoff.
Keith Kirkoff, huh?
So, yeah, he was.
Just right on the.
Right through eighty at the minute. Boy, he's right on there.
Andrea Polly.
If you walked out the back door, you ain't.
You could do Jim Brown's daughter, that Jessica, um, but she got married, I can't remember her last name. She's a broker. Tracy Bruce.
That Tracy Bruce would be a good one.
Tom or John Polly on it?
Tom.
Tom is.
Who took over nipples?
Jim Brown and then his daughter Jessica, uh, has worked her way up to being.
So we just need one for that, so everybody.
Roger Croyle.
Roger Croyle. Get Burnell's on.
Dave Wiegas from the McCord Agency.
Wiegas, that might be.
What do you call it?
Call Dave.
I got it never.
Dave Wiegas.
Dave Wiegas, write it down.
There we go. All right, potentially, Dave Wiegas. I'll write it over on this side.
And Adam Hyder.
Now that tour of homes is over, he'll take my call. So this over, well, I.
Adam.
I asked thirteen people, only, well, fourteen, only one agreed to do it. Everybody had a good reason conflict.
He first or I?
I don't care. That's the only thing. Gosh, I gotta.
Here's the next one. You've got to wait for the tickets. All right, we're caught up. Figure this. Okay, um. Want to start?
Sure. Uh, last week I had region twelve, Carroll is pretty much business as normal. Just went through the executive director report, transit report, and local assistant report. A few things to note. Um, just for FYI, we have seventeen cogs that serve in Iowa. You didn't know that?
Seventeen different ones?
Yep, they're not all in Iowa, but they, there's some that might be outside of that serve. And seventeen that serve in Iowa. We have our audit report for region twelve. Um, on the audit report, John Morrow has done it since, oh, what did he say? Nineteen seventy-something?
Or sixty, Lake City?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, he is retiring. He is going, this is his last audit that he will do for region twelve. So it brought up some discussion for us, um, to put an RFP out, to find a new audit company. The rub is, a lot of our local audit companies, like, I, we're, we're looking into it. Let's just say, for example, Mahoney and Gatto, I'd asked, um, they're gonna check into their locals, but because we get so much federal grants, some of our local audit companies do not want to mess with it or are equipped to audit it.
Okay.
Which means you can't find somebody local like Morrow that was willing to do those federal audits. And will have to go to Des Moines or a bigger, bigger firm, which, you know, yeah, what it means, that means, like, wanting to do an audit.
Is part of that, Dave, uh, because it involves the Davis Bacon wages?
Yeah, all of that. I mean, all your federal regulations and things that the extra hoops and things.
Those do some school mysteries in the area.
Well, we had mentioned that too, but they still said there was some of these federal grants that they get for some of their different categories.
I would guess that Elaine would not want to be involved in auditing to make sure that a, an instruction company and all their subcontractors, if they had somebody on that job for more than ten minutes, was getting paid Davis Bacon wages. And if they worked more than forty hours at another job and then went to the Davis Bacon job, that that's gonna be overtime Davis, you know. So you have to look at everybody's pay stubs. You have to just, uh, I had been writing a check for one penny and five cents after my internal audit uh, with the Armstrong plant. That's how far off I was and they, I literally said I have to write a check for a penny. I couldn't even make it.
Either way, the board gave direction to Rick to search locally first, see if there was any interest, to put our P out here first, and then we can go down the road if we can't find anybody to a bigger firm in the city. We're hoping to find a company by the next meeting within only a month, but it's attainable, you know, it's only a month away.
Only a month.
Um, other thing to, I guess, note is the CDBG awards, the city of Deloitte and Casey got word this week that they were successful in seeking CDBG funds for their sewer and water systems.
Excellent.
So that's good news. Um.
That is excellent. It's a dollar amount, that three hundred and sixty-three thousand or something.
I don't know if they have it in here, but.
Seen something.
Yeah, it'll be. Yeah, so which is good news for our county. I can pass around the reports for you guys to look at if you'd like to. Um, on sidebar, talking with the supervisors there at the meeting, I thought it was interesting. Steph Hausman from Carroll had mentioned that their comp board had met, net comp board had voted on and agreed to three point two percent across the board. All electrical officials.
Oh, they went down there.
Who was that?
Steph Hausman from Carroll.
Oh, so they went percentage.
They went percentage.
You guys have been talking dollars.
Yep.
Yeah, but they want a flat percentage across the board. No electrical official got anything more than the other, and it was just, that's what it was. So it was just interesting to know that this neighboring county, what they had done.
It is interesting.
Wonder if that'll work well. I mean, how that'll work.
Right.
Percentages don't bring about equal dollars, so. I mean, like it or not, it just.
See what we see.
That is what Carroll County, you know, their comp board came up with.
Nice, or considering.
Non-historically underpaid.
Um, the other thing I attended online via Zoom was the House File Saturday eighteen. Isaac, you remember, did you listen on that?
Absolutely. My job.
Probably got a lot.
I figured you did.
It was a lot to take in.
I had Michelle and Megan sat in on, Michelle, I think, did both of them. Megan, we, she did the first one. It was more of a beginners.
I, I felt like the one that we listened to the first one was more, at least upfront, explaining the funds and the departments and a kind of a good refresher, but not really into the meat and potatoes of.
Good for me, I thought.
Yeah. It wasn't saying it was bad, it just is just more explaining.
Right.
How things.
Yeah, the biggest change is that first hearing and the publication, or not publication, the notice we have to send out to all taxpayers. It'll be, uh, some expense we did not budget for, how about that?
Right.
It tells you that right now.
And it's an expense that it's not written in the law as to whose budget it comes out of. But that was the biggest question.
I know. Doesn't matter, because it's gonna create a budget amendment no matter whose it comes out of.
Right.
So to me, that, it's a general fund, so. You know, it's not a state three billion dollars. And we can't charge the cities and schools even though they're informing, they're beyond that notice.
Try that.
Yeah.
Let's try sending a bill to the state.
Nobody said we can't.
Well, we know it probably won't get thing, but.
Might garner some attention.
Yeah.
To the idiocacies.
That's kind of an interesting concept.
Kind of on point of what Jason Van De Haal from Osceola had brought up.
I mean, more than.
This ten thousand dollars. Remember what he said about? They lowered their supplemental or they lowered maybe, uh, they, Jason Van De Haal from Osceola said, they filed to go over their.
Three point five.
Three point five, and their reasoning was, you know, they limited your reasons to, I think, emergency right now.
Yeah, there's not.
But their emergency was unfunded mandates.
Oh.
And it was, it was a wash, and they did it just as a, to make a point or draw a line in the sand. They didn't raise their taxes, they actually lowered another portion.
Because they lowered the supplemental.
I think they lowered supplemental, but then they increased over the three fifty, just to make the point for the state that we're going over three fifty because of your unfunded mandates.
That's enough. You know what? I remember him talking about that now.
Kind of a, you know, a nice little, little jab in the side to say, we're going over because of your.
Because of what you're doing.
What you're doing to us. But they didn't raise, they actually didn't raise net taxes, they lowered somewhere else.
Yeah, I remember him talking about it now.
Subtle middle finger.
It was a slow crank. You know.
Go ahead. I don't want to interrupt.
In our point that we're, you know, boards of supervisors are starting to think, where you're starting to push back a little bit of, hey, you are affecting our, our services and what we provide.
Right.
That's why I would not have, with total knowledge that we would never get the funds paid, but submit a bill to the state.
Yeah.
For, uh, mailing them all to everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, it wasn't us, we didn't, your office didn't ask for that.
Oh.
We didn't tell your office to do that.
Yeah.
Right, but we gotta use our, our funds that we.
Who would you submit it to?
Department of Revenue? I don't know. Department of Administrative Services, Administrative Services. There you go.
And then CC, CC our local legislators.
Can you just go up to their house and hand it to them?
Steven smile at you. Jason probably wouldn't.
Interesting.
Funny, but I do think that, yeah, those added costs that we weren't accounting for. Once again, we.
You know, I, I, and I, I had another conversation with our officials. I said, I'm not worried about this year or next. You know, we've got some reserves, but if we have to start using them to make up the differences to provide the services that we're already mandated to provide, where are we at in ten years? This year we'll probably be all right, next year all right, maybe even the year after that, but eventually, we're not gonna be all right. You know, I mean, because inflation is cooking. And you know, I listened to a guy on TV this morning, Maria Barti, um, you don't like her, you know, but I love her guests. She gets some pretty smart people on there. And this guy was a professor that studies economics. And he said, when you have inflation, you will never get that money back. There's no real such thing as deflation. That's why you never hear it. That doesn't exist. When things go up, they're up forever. He says, and because we don't have gold to bring us back into, you know, because we're not tied to gold or anything anymore. When inflation goes up, it goes up. And then actually, the way the Federal Reserve is set up, it's set up to actually do two percent every year in perpetuity. I don't know, just sounded to me like, you know, where are we gonna be if we can only, if we can't keep up with inflation on our taxing, you know? Like, like we were told up there, I suspect it's gonna be, well, it's your job to figure out what you gotta cut.
That's exactly what we were told, wasn't it?
Exactly.
As they don't cut anything.
Uh, right, as their purse looks nice.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not even gonna get to blame them, blame us anymore. I mean, we just need to talk to our citizens and let them know. You know, hey, we, we never had it. And Crawford County isn't one of the problem counties, you know, one of the dirty thirties or whatever they want to call them, but I'm, I'm kind of tired of everybody getting the dump. Because we can't manage part of our crew. You know, obviously, county government was established to help. State government was supposed to always be the most powerful government in America. It was. You know, I mean, that was to divide the powers equally. And then county governments, in my opinion, or my understanding, were established to assist the state government. That's why there's codes of governance. Does that sound like it makes sense? Okay, but you still gotta quit hamstringing us if you want us to help, otherwise, just get your, get you down here and do it, you know? We'll just go home. We got work to do.
Well, what gets frustrating about, well, what gets frustrating about that to me is we're the easy target. Local governments are the easy target because one, we're the ones on the front lines dealing with everyday citizens, asking why our services aren't here, or how can you provide that better? Why isn't my road rocked with, maintained better? But yet, the state level, they can, which they have been doing, cutting us from boards and making us advisors and cutting our revenue, and they can say, look at this tax break I gave, but yet, they're really not accountable for it. You know, it lands on our lap.
Did you notice after September first, when you sold grain, you don't sell much of all your cattle, but there's a another deduction, the Iowa indemnity fund?
Yeah, I saw that.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Started September first, the state of Iowa thought they needed to take a little money out of our grain sales to burn.
Indemnity fund? That went down? Was it getting depleted?
It was started, I was like, what the hell's this? So I had like Googled it. Well, it was started during the farm crisis.
Yep.
To protect the farmers.
From grain buyers.
From elevators going broke.
Yep.
And it's been self-sufficient, self-supported. But now it's getting, well, like our self-insurance fund, it's getting down there, so they're gonna need to build it back up. But they easily swipe, they wanted three million dollars in there. Then they easily took a little bit out of their five million reserves, or five billion reserves and took a little.
Is that what they're up to now, five billion?
I don't know who you caught. I mean, the rainy day fund's one thing, but then there's reserves in other departments that are up to a couple billion.
And what are you mad at? Interest they're earning right now?
No, they, here again, instead of doing that, they're gonna take it from us again.
Right.
But I'm not against the indemnity fund. I mean, it's.
No, but it just shows where are they taking it from.
Yep. Just frustrated me when I figured that out yesterday. Here again, when has that fund ever been accessed?
What gets access?
Yeah, there, there was a whole article on it, like, like last year, there was three hundred thousand dollars used. There's a small elevator, something that went under. So it does get accessed.
I remember being one time, it's been used locally. It's a, I think it's a benefit, because you can have, you guys have had good grain prices for, for a while. But you know, a lot of times them grain dealers will get to where they're hedging, you know, and sometimes they get behind it. And guess what?
I can imagine.
But it's still need to protect the people that aren't at fault, you know.
Back to that, I think when we were, when that report came out, we were part of the county that were targeted because our general fund balance was higher than what the state thought was necessary.
Was it?
Yeah.
Um.
Because of our, our reserves.
Because our reserve, yeah.
Same with mental health reserves, the ones that had healthy balances so that they could pay.
Yep.
Between pay periods or quarters were attacked as well. Why are you holding so much here?
But they can hold billions and really.
Exactly.
Well, I don't know, every time, every, well, every time I even sat over there, it didn't look like this board was ever trying to do anything but cut levies.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's always been the goal, is to.
Right.
Stay status lower, lower.
Right. Well, we never went above the three fifty. We never went above the three ninety-five. We had supplementals for a long time. But I know, um, you know, we keep those, especially the rural supplemental, it was ten cents. It's currently being levied ten cents. You know, it's pretty, pretty modest.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty, yeah.
We've always tried to live within that sweet spot of new growth.
Right.
New growth to cover wage increases, inflation, whatever, but.
I was always under the understanding that we needed, we wanted to keep our balances at a level that we could withstand six months and not have any taxes come in, which.
Right.
It's all silly, but after we went through COVID, we probably down there needed, we were getting close to possibly having to use it. Because, I mean, a lot of them taxes were being kicked down the road.
Yep, it's a tough year.
But yet, it always seems like the good actors, the ones who try to be prudent due to the, what's right.
Yeah.
End up being the one handed.
Good point.
Take it in the chin harder than the bad actors.
Yeah, I mean, what's to say, I mean, presidential election year, what, what major outbreak are we gonna have next year?
Well, they've already.
There's one cooking in town.
I was gonna say, we've already got something stirred up over there in the, in the, in the pot, in the kettle.
But, like you said, the bad, the good actors are the ones that get punished, the bad actors.
Good mental health.
Yeah.
You know, everybody got punished the same way and everybody's treated the same, even though, you know, our region was doing everything exactly the way they were supposed to.
Exactly.
Now we're all paying the price.
And now all of our services go to Sioux City.
That's right. Yes. Yes.
Boy, you know, I, I'll bet you money, when Cecil was sitting on that, you know, he was against that Woodbury. I bet he'd have been able to talk more people against Woodbury if you'd have seen this coming, because writing would have been on the wall.
But even going back before that, you know, when it was Cherokee County, they were with Woodbury. They, they jumped, came with us, because they didn't want to deal with Woodbury. So then Woodbury came crawling, wanting to be part of it. Cherokee County was the first one to vote in favor of it.
I knew where you were going, yep.
And then we did a critical access center, and it just happened to be one there that, um, so that's where they put all the money. Uh, yep, then they got, yeah.
But what is even more frustrating to me is when they rubbed elbows together and approved forty-five thousand dollars for landscaping.
One of their services.
In Sioux City, but yet.
That's a long ways from.
MRAC in Manning, can't get a dime for substance abuse.
And we got people waiting at the door that are in desperate need of some care, and there's just no room in the end. And, uh, that's what we turned to them away.
I like to go to a big county supervisor meeting, because I feel it's the same deal on the federal level. It's the big population bases against the smaller ones. Us out here in rural Iowa have lost our voice due to the population shift. Us out here in rural Iowa have lost our voice due to the population shift.
Yep, you're right.
Even in the state of Iowa. You know, farmers used to control a lot of stuff. Now there's none of us hardly around, so we don't control much anymore, and the shift of the, the cities.
I would say you still have a strong lobby voice of your trade associations, but it isn't even as strong as it wants.
But the conservative, true working man's voice, I think, is lost.
You know, the, the rural community.
Well, just look at our main streets versus, uh, what Des Moines suburbs are growing, you know?
Yeah.
Or we're drying up in Waukees and.
Oh, boy, yeah.
You know, Ankeny and them are just growing by leaps and bounds.
Well, look where you get them to spend money. I mean, granted, when I'm driving through them cities, that, that new interchange down there going on to 480 and stuff there in Council Bluffs, that's phenomenal. You can just drive down Broadway in Council Bluffs, that's a beautiful street now.
A waste of tax dollars.
Well, that's my point. I mean, we can't even afford to think about things like that out here, never mind do it.
Let's make it beautiful.
But you know, I mean, things that are gonna help us to grow, uh, commercially or industrially, we're, we're, I mean, look at, you just look at all the warehouses and all that that's going up there in Council Bluffs right now. You know, and we're actually in a great location in this part of Iowa for a, a, an industrial hub, you know, I mean, there's, we could be really good, but we don't have a four lane here. And I know where there's a warehouse that they were talking about building here, they just don't have the traffic. You know, safe roads to get in and out of there.
It sounds to me like in the city of Ottawa, they've had a good thing, and the state came in and screwed it all up.
Yeah.
Nobody knows which way to go now.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, that's just it, as Ottawa, you know, they should be able to cook over there, because they're in a good location now.
They got four lanes.
Yeah.
The state does, the state did screw it all up.
Yeah, there's just different things that, and sometimes it's the communities themselves too, that
Oh, yeah.
Kinda kick themselves, but none of that, sorry, Dave.
No, no.
Thank you. That was all Region 12-ish.
Uh, no, I, I, I'm done. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mr. Dozer.
Attended my first, uh, third district Department of Corrections, third judicial district, and, uh, last Friday. And this is the first meeting as the advisory board versus an action board. And, uh, we decided that, uh, by the law that's passed, you can't meet more than four times a year. And so we are meeting three times a year. We're gonna meet in April, August, and December. And.
It's interesting that they wanna limit how many times you can meet.
Cannot meet more than four.
It's like they don't want you to talk.
So they changed the name, we're now the Iowa Department of Corrections, third district, so everybody is, you know, just your number of the districts. Uh, one of the things I thought that was interesting that Marine said was that the change has been difficult from a management and administrative standpoint. But when I asked her about what about the services and stuff we provide, and she said there has been no loss of any service, that we are doing what we do, did before, exactly the same way, and, and, and serving just as many people as we did. So that part is not affected. And she actually said, Craig, I think within a year and a half probably, that it'll be, it'll be fine. So, but like when I, because I mentioned that Department of Administrative Services, and she said, just for instance, um, we needed to purchase two vehicles. So the way we always did before is we got some bids from local dealers. And, uh, they would bid, we'd buy a vehicle. And so they did that and bought one vehicle from a dealer in Sioux City. The other one, they were told that, hey, you need to start using the Department of Administrative Services out of Des Moines, because they do that for the, all the state agencies in the state of Iowa. And so they got one vehicle through them, and it was out of a dealership in Des Moines. So of course, they had to drive from Sioux City to Des Moines to pick it up. And as she said, then on top of that, Department of Administrative Services sent us a bill for their services of finding them that vehicle. So that's why we should send the bill to them.
It just gets better and better.
That's why you perked up right away.
Well, I would just go, did they save any money by doing that?
No, they did not.
But you gave them some.
But the Des Moines dealership.
Carl Chevrolet got a kick, got it. I bet there's a lobbyist that works for Carl Chevrolet sitting on the apartment.
No.
But don't tell Jimmy he needs to go through them to get a new sheriff's van, because I heard he's in the market for a while.
Okay.
Waiting for their services and go get it.
Please tell me your new name, Iowa Department.
I'm sorry, Iowa Department of Corrections, third district.
Scratch that idea. Sounds legit, though. I mean, that's kind of what we were talking about, trying to find better ways to.
Yeah, yeah.
If you can vehicle, if you can order a hundred versus one.
I'd like to know what the heck the cost difference was between the one you got local and.
I don't think there was any difference.
Yeah, so we should have stayed local to take care of our folks.
That's what their feeling was too, is if you have an office in Sioux City area, you're servicing in that area, that's where you should buy.
And if they're following all the procedures, the bidding process, that whole business, I mean, if they weren't, I could see why, but they are, yeah.
My God, Jones said you gotta buy your vehicles from me and.
So, I mean, it was an interesting first meeting. Once again, a lot of the acronyms and stuff, uh, I need to learn.
Was that a Zoom meeting then?
What's that?
Was it a Zoom meeting or?
It was in Sioux City.
In Sioux City?
I guess, I didn't think Zoom was an option, but I guess when I got there, it was.
Yeah.
But it was nice to go to see the facility. And they do now, also in the law, um, it was stated that the advisory board can be paid mileage to attend a meeting. So.
Waste they could.
They probably charge us back for it.
But.
They'll send it to you in the mail, the postage due.
So that was my meeting with them.
Quick, did you ask Marine when Medicaid is gonna cover our county jails, medical, did they say anything about that?
I actually asked that question to, um, my source at the governor's office. I just asked, I said, is it, is it, the way I understand it, I said, is it that once you go to prison, if you're in a county facility, that the counties now have to pay the closure, because they go off Medicaid? And when they go into a state facility, then they go back on Medicaid? And you lose all Medicaid when you become arrested?
Incarcerated.
Incarcerated, correct. So I guess what my next question, because I didn't quite understand it, is that it seemed like the state then wants to keep them and the county level for as long as possible. So the counties have to pay, because once they go into the state facilities, the state has to pay.
Yeah.
So, to me, the next thing is, is there needs to be some sort of rules as to how long they can allow them to stay in county.
What did your source say?
That I didn't know. That, I thought about that after she told me that, she talked to their director of Medicaid and said, no, you lose, everybody loses Medicaid services when you become incarcerated.
No matter what.
Whether, no matter what level you're at.
That's why there's that leg of.
Right, and I didn't think about that until afterwards. I thought about that, you know, as you drive around, you start thinking about, and I'm like, next time I see my daughter, I'm gonna ask.
I always thought they got to be back when they went to the state.
I know.
I also heard that when you get, if you get probed, you know, on probation, if you, you found where you could be early released, they released, they were wanting to release them or are releasing them back to the counties? And then we're responsible for them. But yet they don't have Medicaid yet, because they haven't been released.
So we're gonna have to pick it up.
Again, and I don't know, I, don't, don't quote me completely on that, but I just, it was something that I heard at a meeting. I don't even remember, it was Central Iowa or not.
You know, there's, there's some times where the person who got arrested needs a medication, but they haven't been able to afford it, so have not been on it. And then when they get incarcerated, then they start needing, they want it again, and since they have, you know, prescription for it, we're required to get that for them, and sometimes it's very expensive.
Yeah.
And so they're better off to just stay there and get the medication that probably is the reason that they had to act out, because they weren't getting this medication.
Imagine if you had talked to our sheriff, we probably have repeat offenders that do get backed out for the reasons of getting prescriptions filled.
Yep. Probably.
And I, you know, I think Steiny told us himself that there was a time where there was the gentleman that they had arrested and thought he was having a heart attack, and so he just released him, because he didn't want to have to worry about, you know, he told us that himself one time, you know, just, uh.
Interesting.
To, uh.
Probably we are the low-hanging fruit.
Yep.
And, and, and my point is, right, and also, we're the low-hanging fruit, and we're the ones that generate our revenue from property tax.
Yep.
And so the state wants to reduce property tax, and yet they want to shift
All the costs.
drug, all the cost to the county who's charging the property tax. They're not charging property tax.
Right.
You know?
And the problem is, is if this person that's been incarcerated is complaining of, you know, chest pains or severe stomach, you know, and they ignore it, then we're up for a lawsuit if, let's say they, you know, had appendicitis and it ruptures while they're in the jail, because we're saying, you're okay, stop, you know? So you have to.
And we need our staff.
Well, and that was kind of brought up, you know, could we possibly use our public health nurses or telecare, you know, with our insurance to, to visit, to make sure that, that it's just not the get out of jail free card? To say you have a headache and, you know, you've got, gotta go to the emergency room, and that's all on the taxpayers.
That's something that we're gonna need to work on.
So, you know, I wonder, how would a person go about finding that out?
Don't complain about that.
Well, it's funny how things are coming full circle, because even with mental health, and Eric Scoop talked about this a lot, when the state hadn't ran it and it totally imploded.
Yep.
Services weren't being.
Right.
Met, and rural areas are being dropping in the cracks.
Well.
And what did they do? Oh, we can't manage it from the state point, it's too big, we need locals.
Yep, yep.
So then they created the mental health regions and gave us the levy to do so. And now we're getting, it's like, we're going away from that to all these boards that we currently serve on, and and they're gonna, the state won't be able to manage it and give it back to us.
We talked about that right away.
I had a scenario last week. I mean, right, right in my own nickels, you know, which, um, so I, but we we've lost our ability to even really talk to anybody to make any serious change, because it just, it just looks like we're not being heard.
You know, even in industry, whenever you have a rotation of leadership, and you get new people that didn't get taught the lessons that the last organ, the last group of leaders had learned, you seem to have to go through the same repeat, history repeating itself.
That's exactly right.
And, and it, and it, and it looks like government can function the same way, you know? I mean, we'll, we'll see, maybe they learned the lessons and they'll run mental health better. But our experience right now is telling us that that's probably not gonna be the case, because we're already having service issues.
It's gonna take a while. If it actually happens.
If they fix it.
Yeah.
But.
But I don't think that they even realize what goes on here on a day-to-day basis, you know, I, uh. Well, and the other part of it is them changing the thought process. You don't have the mental illness, you can't go here even though you're having a drug problem, but they're both kind of related, because you're self-medicating with alcohol, because you have this issue that it's, they do work together, I do believe that.
Oh, yeah. So then just to finish up, uh, Wesco meeting last night, um, things continue to go well there. They have about 2.4 million that they're looking at putting into CDs, um, that they have, putting in 200,000 a month to sell that, and 12-month CDs, so every month they have 200,000 that they can free up if they need the cash.
That's great.
Um, one thing else, they mentioned that their Medicaid um, errors and disciplinaries are down, and they attribute that to two years ago, they, I think I've talked to you about it before, they had a big wage increase, where their average employee is now 1950 an hour, state average is 1490 in that type of position. And they think because of that, they've got a different class of staff than what they used to have. And so they're happy about that. Um, the wave program that was at the church is moving to where the head start or preschool was kind of underneath Verizon wireless.
Oh.
Underneath there, uh, they're moving there. Maybe, I guess the preschool probably will stay till May, I would guess, that's the school year. And, um, then, uh, the wave program from Wesco will rent that out.
Do you know how much that to pay for that?
2,000 a month.
What were they paying him?
$250 a month. So, quite an increase for them, but it's.
Is the space bigger?
The space is not bigger, it's about a little over 4,000 square feet. They currently have about 5,000 square feet, but it's more open than what the old one was, and the access as far as getting, uh, buses, uh, handicap buses in and getting the people out, you can make a kind of a circle drive in the back, and so they're more happy with that um, than anything. I, I haven't walked through the facility yet.
Is that the place that has the little playground outside?
Yes.
Will they be able to tap into that as things for an outdoor?
Yes.
And whether it's good.
And.
Any updates on the housing?
The housing, they are looking at now Wesco doing itself is purchasing the homes, and they think they can purchase one to two per year. They're looking at, um, I wanna say pre-made homes, modular homes. Um, they don't want any basements, just a flat piece of concrete, stick the homes on there. I guess they have now homes that come and you unfold them. I haven't seen any of them, but, um, they're thinking they're gonna cost probably close to $200 a square foot. And, um, Wesco will own the homes that the attitude, I guess, with the state has changed, that up to five years ago, they didn't want these facilities like Wesco owning any homes, but now they're okay with it. So Wesco has the funds to do that, and so I think that's the route that they're gonna go.
Would they be interested in buying the, the homes that currently, um, Tinkle has?
Well, Tinkle doesn't want to sell them. He's changed his mind and said, like I said at the meeting last night, I said, perhaps you talk to his children, and they said, Dad, what kind of return are you getting on them?
Yeah.
Maybe if you're gone, we'd still like to keep that return.
It could be, yep, because that's a, that was a good investment he made, and he went here to go to, uh.
I got two of you left, all those are so thick. That's all I have.
Hey, Paul.
Good morning. Good reports. How good it was? Good. I've already stopped you. Yeah. There you go, little Christmas luncheon. Next week, well, he's gonna give a heads up.
That's very nice.
So.
Very nice.
Little safety items with that, so. Yep.
I will be gone.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, yeah, one for you.
That part was the safety part.
That's what it starts, you know, lunch at, you know, 11:30.
I enjoyed the snowy mobile part.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I decided I'm doing my day job for sure.
Paul calls the third string and all you bail round motors.
My third string already?
What are you doing from 10 to 11?
Phone close to you. Uh, we're having some safety programs. Northern Necrogas is gonna do a presentation. Uh, the Iowa GOT is gonna do a distracted, uh, driver, defensive driver presentation. And then, um, we've got Dana Nieman from the hospital is gonna come and talk about cold weather first aid. We have some programs there. And then, uh, 11:30 soup sandwich, kind of the same thing. We got, you know, I just kind of try to get a few giveaway things, and we have some vendors that will give us gift cards, tumblers, hats.
Nice.
That, you know, and then everybody gets a pair of gloves. But it's just kind of in the spirit of giving.
Yep.
Um, try to, try to make it a little fun, so.
Paul, I would not be able to make it to the hospital where I don't need you.
Yeah, so just, just trying to let everybody know, you know, so there's an opportunity, you're welcome to come. And the, and the guys always enjoy that, so. But, so yeah, um, don't have a whole lot on here this morning. Uh, I've got Western Florida Waters connecting another resident to, uh, rural water, sure. That's probably another one of the, the dry well syndromes. I think that one is, I'm pretty sure of that. So, um, so we've got that, uh, the bridge replacement project, um, on E16. Just waiting for the light in here now, um, which that'll be here before we know it. And the mental, mental maintenance shop, they just basically stopped, you know? Sure, I'm not sure why they're not putting the building up, unless all, all of it's not, you know, not all of it's there, I don't know. There's a lot of it sitting there. Um, but maybe they're just gonna wait till spring, put it up.
Great weather to do it.
Perfect weather to do it. So, uh, but, you know, they had. Perfect weather to do it. So, uh, but, you know, they have until July first. Get it done, so. And they will, they'll get it done. So, uh, great crew, just kind of touching up some things down there, um. On uh T Avenue and then the bridge crew going around and just doing some. Outlet work, cut trees, just some of that. Actually, it's a great time to, to do a lot of this stuff because there's not snow on the ground and, you know. And then the other, you know, the, the dishing crews and blade operators when they're not doing. You know, blading their out cut trees, so it's, you know, it's a great time right now. You know, sometimes you just gotta, you gotta stop doing ditch work or stop doing dirt work and take advantage of good weather like this because once it starts to snow and you get six inches of snow. Brush cutting becomes a problem, you know, just becomes hazardous for the guys out there. And so this is good weather for that. Um, the uh. Couple of things, the bridge is done out in Yellow Smoke. I don't know if any of you saw the nice article that Dan did. And, uh, you know, we kind of, you know, we joked when we talked about doing ribbon cutting, but. If you want to go out and take a look at it, you can either do it on your own. If you want to go out as a group, I'm fine with that too, but uh it's a very nice project. Turned out really, really nice and uh I think it'll uh. It'll get a lot of views and.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's right by the campground, so you know, this picture is taken looking from the campground, so. Our guys went in there and.
Super good.
About a week.
I had a good time doing it.
No, no. So, yeah.
So I'll be there for a lot of years to come. A lot of people will enjoy it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's your last seventy years, a hundred years.
Be there a long time. Yeah, and I mean, I just, you know, it's a great, it's a great asset. Addition to the uh park. And then um the uh, you know, we, we, we provide fuel to the city, to a lot of different entities, fuel and gas. I think I've talked about this before. So we're keeping really detailed records, okay, as best we can, you know, and uh. And so our shrink is about one point seven percent on the gas and about one percent, a little over one percent on the diesel, which is what, you know, I've heard from. Station owners. It could be as high as two percent, you know? So what, what that means is that, you know, since we've started kind of doing this detailed summary, you know, um, here back in twenty twenty one. We've moved a hundred and seventy six thousand gallons of gas through that tank system down there and. And there's twenty nine hundred and twenty unaccounted for.
We talked about that.
One point seven percent vapor, you know, it's gone. It's just, you're gonna lose it. And on diesel, we ran two hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty two through, and we've uh. Got twenty three hundred and one that's unaccounted for. So the percentage I took from not the, but the, but the reduced number and then I kind of. Ran the percentage, one point one, one point seven. You know, we've talked about it. You know, I don't know others, you know, because the, the billing is directly to them. You know, to, to, to the uh providers credit. They're used to selling tanker loads, so it's a very good price. I mean, it's a really good price. Um, and so they'll sell a tanker load and uh. And then they bill out that tanker to the individual entities based on their usage and then we provide them the report of the usage, which is what our system does down there to collect that. So it works really well. It's just acknowledging that a service station would charge for that.
Yeah.
And it's just don't, it's really no good way for us.
Yeah, that's, we need to figure out a way that we're, we're sharing that shrink.
Yeah, so.
Or is there? Uh, maybe I'm wrong, but I mean, your gas shrink. Diesel obviously too is probably higher in your summer months because of the.
Heat.
The heat creates to, to change state from a liquid to gas and evaporate out. So I mean, would by building a shelter and a roof over it to keep the sun directly from beating on it, reduce that shrink? I mean, uh.
They're dual, they're dual wall tanks, you know?
Right, so there is some, there is some.
Yeah.
Cooling effect to do the dual wall tanks. I don't, I don't know, I'm just.
I don't know either. Uh, I just know that they just acknowledged it in the industry. Okay, and so we're basically a municipal service station. We do all the accounting, we do all the bookwork, we do everything for, we do all the, you know. Everything to kind of make it all happen, take care of everything. However, you know, everybody that we provide to is a county. Part of our county.
I got a tax part regardless.
So, so I, I don't know. I mean, I just want to make you aware of it and it's a service and I think, you know, when, when, you know, and, and so they're in life, you know, it's the same thing and, and you guys know it with grain. You know, an elevator always has to, you know, they get a hundred thousand bushland, but I guess you could guarantee you they're not hauling a hundred thousand bushland.
Right.
That never happens. And, and so they account for that and there, you know, there's industry standards for what's allowed or what's acceptable and so. Uh, I'm not saying I'm really, I'm not really terribly concerned from a dollar standpoint. I just want to make you aware of it.
That's a lot of, yeah, that's a lot of gallons.
Do we bill them then exactly the same that we get billed? That's how that works?
Well, whatever their usage is, see the, 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 the system down there, everybody's got a number. When you, you use it, there's a report that. Generates a report for each entity, hospital, city, public work, you know, the, the different entities that use it. And so fire department, you know, they all get their fuel and, and, and uh, and gas from us, so. Um, there's, again, just making it aware that, 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 you know, over time, you know, it just, this start to add up.
Maybe you have a question? What percentages are usage of the total gallons? Do you know roughly, like, are we using eighty percent of?
We probably use a high percentage of the diesel.
We're gonna have shrink regardless where it's all ours. So of the like three thousand gallons and.
Yeah.
Eighty percent is ours, we're really only looking at. Twenty percent of three thousand gallons, that is, we're losing to the other entities, right?
The gas is probably the big one. Uh, we don't use, we're, we're probably, you know, on the lower end, it's law enforcement. It's police, they're, they're the ones that are using the gas.
Yeah, but couldn't you figure out a percentage per gallon?
At a few cents per gallon.
Even if you only bill it once a year.
Good at the end of the year, try to capture a number and say, hey, we're gonna bill you for the shrink. I, I don't know if you guys want to go there or not.
Well, I take corn to the elevator, they charge me shrink.
Yeah, oh, I know they do, yeah.
You know?
I mean, I, I'd like to know what, you know, I mean, the, the obviously fuel rates fluctuate. It'd be nice to know what them gallons are costing us.
Because this is over, this is over a two year period, basically.
Two year?
Yeah, well, yeah, about two years, two and a half years.
It'd be nice to know what that's costing us.
Let's see, the first one was one nineteen twenty one, this one's three nineteen twenty.
Because obviously that's all part of it almost.
It'll be almost three years.
Goes back to these are other task acts, being entities or levying entities that whether we take it off of ours and they add it to theirs, it's still. It's gonna be.
As I said, it's not like we're selling it out. We're not selling it out to people and, and uh. But uh, when you visit with, you know, the, the other entities, it's nice for them to know that we're providing this benefit to them.
Right.
That's kind of what I'm getting at here. Is a, a certain level of appreciation for the fact that we're doing all this.
And if you don't bring it to light, then.
Yeah.
Nobody knows.
Yeah, nobody knows about it.
It's almost a pre year report.
It's a three year report, yeah, so it's a lot less than, you know?
Yeah.
So I said, this is since we started taking.
So that's not just the one year?
Yeah.
No, 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 that's, that's since we started, started doing it.
Probably ours, so the number gets smaller.
It's, it's really the gas is probably where we.
Yeah.
You know?
The diesel is probably, we would lose that regardless.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess. It'll be hard to do in an alley and shop. Some of them have covered facilities, but there's no, not as detailed as a.
Oh, the accounting now. And we know what goes in, we know what goes out, I guess, but we don't have a spreadsheet that shows all of that.
We know what goes in and what it battles into we get over.
They keep it full, well, they just keep it full. It is, you know, we're out, keep full schedule.
So we, I was just curious what the loss would be at, so I'm like, maybe be just a waste of money, but in a roof over it.
Well, the cost of that versus the cost of loss on a diesel tank and, you know, and honestly, the veil.
Three thousand gallons of gas at three fifty, I mean, we're starting to.
Yeah, that's gas. See, we don't have, we only have one gas tank out there and the others are all diesel. The only gas we have is a veil.
Start billing that, bring us roof over it for. Nine thousand dollars, but that's three thousand dollars a year, so I mean.
Yeah.
Roughly.
Yeah, and this is for ten thousand gallons.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Interesting numbers.
It is.
Paul, the difference you think between what retail. Uh, gas and diesel is versus what you buy.
Huge difference.
You don't want to upset yourself.
Huge, huge difference.
But no, what I'm just saying is that without us offering that service to the cities, those people would have to be buying at retail.
Well, that's, you know, we.
Think of the, our sheriff's department, you know, if they didn't offer this, they just had to go buy it retail.
Yeah, well, last year on Christmas Day.
Put that into the equation.
Yeah, last year on Christmas Day, I got called in because. Somebody had forgot to take the hose out of the vehicle, police officer did, had forgot to take the hose out of the vehicle and drove off. And so I got in here and there was all just laying there, you know? And uh. Anyhow, I wish there'd been a little more concern about that. We had to fix it.
Wow.
Anyhow.
That'd be a little bit harder for that one.
I was about to do that, yeah.
I can imagine.
And so, you know, and so then the question, well, what do we do? I said. There's, there's five or six gas stations in town, go to one of them.
Yeah.
You know, so that's the alternative is when you, you know, uh, I just, I want to make you all aware. So if you talk to city council or you talk to people in the city or the. Hospital, wherever it is.
Well, it's a great.
You know, it's, it's a great service.
Yeah.
Okay, and I want them to appreciate that, understand that it's.
Just looking off the ramp.
It's a benefit.
So what's the Tony, I don't think of Kurt's O'Qua or whatever.
They like it, yeah. Actually, they were using it back. I think the bridge crew kind of latched on to part of it. They were using it in the backyard. Uh, Tony, they're, they're out cutting trees right now. I don't know if they have the excavator out there or not, but so far as it's still, they like it, yeah.
Okay, I just saw Tony Bryant, he was out there, he saw the hands up right there on that road.
Okay, yeah.
They bring it in there and.
Yeah, so it's a nice, be a nice tool, it's about eighteen thousand dollars. That's a lot to figure out. Our new motor grader is coming tomorrow, dude, by the way. So that'll be here and then they'll take the old one and, and uh, then we're getting another one in March, so those, those are kind of moving along, but.
I did have to call your bridge crew for the last week, but apparently he was down at Omaha customing a new piece of machine and I was getting all kinds of snap jants and videos of it, so I wanted to know what his. End game was, you know? Actually, it's really neat, the case, it's got a little tracks and had a six way dozer blade on it and that was.
Yeah, only just down there goofing, yeah.
Well, you know, getting a feel for it, so it's out there, you know?
Well.
And it, it would be a great addition to what they're.
For the bridge?
For what they use them.
For the bridge crew.
Yeah.
So they've got a little John Deere crawler right now that, that um, it's wore out. Fifty years old. And it's not as efficient, it's not as efficient as the newer equipment, the skid steers. And this is really kind of a cross between a skid steer and dozer and a loader and a track.
That's a hybrid. You could, you know, all kinds of different tools out there.
Yeah.
Not limited to one thing.
So they're supposed to be getting us a firm price and before I was gonna come up and talk to you all about it, I was gonna try to make sure.
What's the range of price on that kind of?
It's probably gonna be in that hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, that's bad as hell.
Yeah. Paul, it sounded like it's, when you lose a Terry Lally or.
That's what I told you.
You always have that next guy coming. Finding that next tool that can really help out.
Christmas at, Christmas at the bridge group.
You know, but they do a good job.
What are your thoughts of transitioning into, you know, that machine?
Yeah, I think it plays into that all right, yeah.
That machine will be so versatile to where your current crawler is limited to that.
Yeah.
To me though, it's the, the neat thing about what they do with that, and I know we joke around with Terry always wanting picking up or saying we need this or that. It shows that they're really excited about what they do and that they want to find that next tool that can really improve and, and enhance what they're doing and.
Efficiency, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, that little crawler was down several times and it's so old, parts become problematic.
Is that the John Deere?
The John Deere crawler, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
So those things all kind of come to rise and so I think, you know, what we're looking at is maybe buying this. And then eventually getting rid of one of the Ts, the D six Ts on the great crew. Get rid of the international dozer in the bridge crew and then replace that with one dozer like a D six N or a D six K. Uh, that could be used both places and just a little smaller. Finished dozer sort of small enough, it could be used on the bridge crew when they need it. They don't need it all the time, you know, and then just kind of have that, you know? Because, you know, as we talk, you know, moving forward, we'll have less of some of these things to do, so it's time to maybe downsize one unit.
I think that'd be a good.
So that's kind of what, yeah. So they, they wouldn't have a dozer, the, the dozer that's per se designated to them like they have now and it would kind of be a multi use for both crews, so.
No, I, I was impressed with that thing.
Yeah, yeah, there's a half, half hour long video that you can watch.
I didn't get there.
So, but yeah, you know, that is, Dave, to that point, you know, they're excited and engaged in what they do. And I said, go down, take a look at it. So they all went down, it's been a half a day, you know? Tested, tested it out. You gotta have, they gotta have the ability to go do some of those fun things too.
Right.
You know?
Always I would agree, yeah.
So they uh, but they came back all excited. And I think we can make it, you know, because we had a dozer budget and, and uh, we, we didn't fill that around, so. Okay.
Thank you, Paul.
You bet.
All right, let's uh. Even if you want to.
Yeah, we could probably do some more reports. All we got left on the agenda before citizens input is that.
Trustee. No, but Pat or. You have Pat here to see the citizen. Pat, are you here for Nick Daman for the trustee or?
Yes.
Are you? Okay, well, let's go ahead and do that.
Let's do it.
Okay, we uh, Nishnabana Township, I'm the township clerk. We had an unusual situation facing us or facing us right now. Uh, you got a three member board. Several months ago, one of our members passed away. And then we were kind of waiting, Phil Strachey's another member of our board, he was in his busy season. And we were gonna wait until his busy season was over to meet and pick a replacement. Uh, meantime, another one of our members uh has a medical problem. And I was informed by his wife here a few weeks ago that he would be unable to perform his duties any longer. Because of this medical issue. So now we need to replace two members. And I discussed with the auditor's office procedure for this, suggested that we go ahead and. Uh, suggest a replacement and you guys have to approve it. Uh, we would like to appoint Nick Daman to replace Byron Bornhoff, one passed away. And then we will go through the process of uh replacing the gentleman that's still live and unable to perform his duties. And we have to get a, a statement or a document signed by him. Uh, stating that he's no longer wanted or able to do another job. So today basically asking you for your approval of Nick Daman.
Chair, I'd make that motion to approve Nick Daman for township trustee of Nishnabana.
I'd second that.
Okay, there's a motion was made by Mr. Almar and cited by Ms. Hayden to. Prove Nick, Nick Daman for the Nishnabana Township trustee. Is there any further discussion? Do you have anything further to add? No. Okay. Uh, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Suppose no, chair votes aye. Your dominant trustee.
I'd hear that. Back after we complete this whole process.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you looking after things. All right, uh, Mr. Schultz.
All right, this won't take too long. I'll talk quick. Conservation Board meeting last Wednesday night. For some reason, I always face it off and I got in touch with Chris and whatever stuff that happened there. Uh, Bridge have done, obviously, we already talked about that. He was a budget amendment. He's already got one for the pickup. But he says Bryce one got married, or is getting married, so we're gonna have to up his insurance, so it might be a, another part of that budget amendment. And Dr. Tancredi's new. Enclosed shelter house is kind of a hold till spring now. He's wanting to build a, the Dancredi family is, Mason and Tancredi have really. Where his other ones are? No, they want to build it up and kind of on the other side by the nature center. I mean, they're talking amphitheater and stuff of that nature. Or is this trying to dial them down with. I have reservations, don't squash somebody's fire.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they're wanting to pay for it on all.
And why, why, why is Chris wanting to?
They're worried about who's gonna clean it. You know, stuff of that nature. And I think, you know, I think they're willing to build and then put money in a.
Endowment?
An endowment to make, for maintenance of, you know?
I wouldn't idle them down, you know, because I clean a small.
Because they're looking for a place that can handle a wedding reception of like a hundred and fifty people, not, not grand, big. They want a small or something.
No.
I don't know, I'm like, just let them.
Don't look gift horses.
You know, they're, Mason and Tancredi, they, they love them, just, they're just. You can see their brain is just old. You see their brain is just always going. It's just like, wow. So I, hopefully it works out.
I hope so too.
Cause it'd be a great addition to the park.
I think so.
Can you tell Chris that title and back or?
The board is kinda trying to tell them. I'm just a liaison there, so I.
Oh, just a liaison.
Always my opinion.
Okay.
So.
Who's on the board that person could?
Mary, Mike, Meg, Mike, Peterson. Steve Hall.
Is, uh, Huntley?
Buddy, yeah, Kenny Huntley.
Kenny Huntley?
Kenny Huntley.
From?
Over by Vale.
Good group of people and they're really concerned about parts out there.
Yep.
And they did approve the Washington Park Cabin, if funding is raised to allow it to be placed in Dow City at the,
By the Dow?
Dow House.
That's nice to know.
But no tax dollars will be used in this process. So they've got a donation started already, so.
Cool.
Excellent.
It should, you know?
Okay.
I mean, I think they needed seventy thousand dollars. To take it apart, put it back together in better shape, you know, so it would stay on another two hundred years.
Is there grant money for that historical?
I think there probably will be. I mean, they just gotta get the process started. They talked about grant funding. But I think she had to have a process.
They needed to know where it was gonna be first.
Yep, we got that.
So, yeah.
Replica with the writing in the library that talks about it. Have you ever seen that?
Which library?
The, the really this library. It has a write-up about it.
Really?
Yeah. And it talks about where.
Does Amy know that's in there in the library?
No, I just happen to have to spend some time in there.
You got to spend some time in there.
Yeah, I was honored to. It was filled, it was filled with a grocery sack bag day of books for a dollar or whatever. And my nine-year-old grandchild went Christmas shopping for her cousins.
I thought this was for your, your book club, your wine and book club.
No, we do not meet at the library. Uh, we have such a good time trash everybody's houses that we go there.
They don't actually read books, Adrian.
Uh, this month is gonna be at the Blind Spot.
The Blind Spot?
Vision twenty twenty, uh, club place that they have, they call the Blind Spot.
All the books will be in Braille this week.
They'll join us soon.
Talked with Martha and Colin, reached out to me on the legalities if we wanted to have it custom farmed, per se. Uh, there's threshold limits that he would, but he said to be transparent. And he said if we did choose to go down that road, it'd be best to put it out for open bins. And I did some figuring yesterday to try to come up if it even be feasible for us to do that with markets and input costs. Uh, if we went with a bean, we would profit about three hundred and sixty dollars an acre. Three hundred and thirty with crop insurance out there, which I did check on, we can get crop insurance. But then I questioned, we're getting three hundred and some dollars an acre rent, why would we, why would we risk taxpayer dollars?
To take that risk on it?
To take that risk. But if I want corn, well, a little different deal, five hundred and ten dollars an acre. So we'd be about two hundred dollars an acre ahead.
On the other hand, you put that back to beans.
Beans with tribe in there.
Right.
But I still question as a board, do we want to take, we'd have to have a budget amendment just so we could put a crop in.
We'd have to decide what.
Colin said he could help write a new contract, rental contract for a one-year rental with verbiage in there that would allow us to enroll it into a CRP program. At our,
At our discretion.
At our discretion. Think about that. Cause I think if we're gonna do that, we probably should start getting that ball rolling. Cause here we are, middle of December.
I think that would be the safest bet to take risk away from.
I don't know.
Raising a crop.
Yeah.
With taxpayers' money.
Yeah. I think so. That's my kind of opinion. I mean, there's risk versus reward. I mean, there's always potential to have a bigger reward. But then one needs to sustain all the risk.
But not saying that having it custom done with Iowa State's rates that are very fair.
That's what I used to develop the input.
There'd be a little bit more management on, counting on our, our part of seed chemicals, selling, what, how much we sell, contract, you know, all that stuff. But not saying it can't be done.
Right. It, it could be done. It would just take some more legwork coming from this.
The farm committee, the farm crew.
So thinking about that, maybe next week we'll just try to, should we put it on the agenda to make a decision on, like I said, it's middle of December, we should probably decide what we're gonna do. I mean, we've been trying to drag our feet waiting to see what farm bills come out.
Would you?
I wonder.
I don't look for that in four July to be honest with you.
And we could discuss it next week as far as what, just the one year contract?
Yeah, yeah. And I cravenly have to know if we can make the contract from, uh, March first to September thirtieth or something, the, kind of just annually. I don't know. I have to have Colin look into that, but. And you got with the, oh, I mean, they obviously have to get their crop out. But it would terminate after crops harvested. Just so they automatically get notice every.
Couldn't you honestly, Craven, could just put it into even somehow, if it's at our discretion? Cause what we ran into is we couldn't take over the, the lease ended in what?
March first.
March first. So as soon as your crops out. That we could take over in regards to a CRP program.
The problem we ran into is we couldn't, we couldn't even sign the papers until current renters signed off on it.
Because those leases would go from March to March. You have to give notice in September that they're not renewing the next March. But they still then have property from September to March.
Get the crop out, do nothing.
And I mean, I, he had every right to not sign that paper, so. That's what we wanna avoid. So if we decide the next September we're gonna enroll it, we don't necessarily need to have. Serve notice.
Right.
I could have Colin work on drawing something up or, or we can discuss it more next week.
Might not be bad to have some work, at least to get a start on this. We have something.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll let him know.
Then we can discuss it, tweak it next week.
So we would just, are you looking at just renting that out then for a year?
Well, I think so. I mean.
But we're just looking to do this for one year so we can get in CRP.
Well, we wanna make sure.
We don't wanna get our grounds. I mean, if you're going corner, 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 obviously you're already kinda sucking the nutrients out of the ground there.
If they're putting P and K.
I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that Todd or that the person didn't take care of it. I'm just saying, if we start renting it out.
Wait, when you rent it out on a one-year basis like that, the guy's not gonna.
Take care of it in the summer.
Here like he would if he do, I got it. Even I doubt Jerry's, he's, I mean, for not wanting to relinquish that, cause he said, I got a lot invested in that farm. Now, I don't know if he truly does or not. I didn't check his.
Cause we did the P and K.
Yeah, we did lime and we did.
Right.
Yeah, we did some of the fertilizer on there.
He didn't?
Every year?
Four.
Four years ago. I, I know we limed it. I can't remember.
Yeah, we did the lime. I thought. And they have to bid on it according to our contract.
Yeah, yeah. Right. Be upfront about it.
Right, this is what our contract says, bid on it accordingly.
Right.
Just like if we say we're gonna do P and K or lime, you might bid up for it because you know the fertilizer cost is already covered, you know?
I would say if we're gonna truly wanna get enrolled in CRP, there's no sense. Putting a bunch of P and K in our, we might run another year.
Okay, that sounds like a agenda item next week.
What should the agenda item say, do you think?
Discuss and take action of county farm.
Discuss.
Just that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wrote, but I thought should there say something more? You can be more specific in your emotion that gets made of the action, got it?
With that said, my figure of fifty-five bushel beans would probably be a little wide. So I mean.
Frankly, going, going, you might raise.
Might be eighty bushel beans. So I mean, that really turns a profit from three sixty to. You don't, don't. Risk some more, huh? Risk a little, gain a little, risk a lot, gain a lot.
We can discuss that again next week too. I mean, it does, right? We still, it can be done. I mean, it's just a little more management to be done.
I was just thinking about, you know, for the ground. So it gets good. I mean, you'd get a good cleanup on it. Plus you'd also get a good start on the, when you plant the grass.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be ideal to just go and no till right in the bean stubble.
Yeah.
We get a better stand.
That's all I was thinking about.
Uh, while I was talking with Colin, he asked about the charter of township cemetery. About getting that quick claim deed finished up and getting that to the rightful custodians of the, of the property. And then Terry's been doing a good job.
Planning a burial.
It worked out good last year. Called me, I drove over there and found a lot and it worked out, so. But I've talked to said trustees and they said they're gonna resign. I said, well, this is perfect timing then.
Right, let's get it thrown down.
Get it done. They can resign and then we can appoint new ones and.
So Randy and Lori are.
Yeah, they're, I, I think they're just to that age where they're trying to reel in. They got, I mean, grandbabies now floating around and they wanna just focus more on retirement and that stuff. The way I, I would think. I know he's talked about when it turns up on school board, he's gonna get off that and just, yeah, it's time. I think the one boy's gonna start renting some of the ground and just looking at retirement. So we could probably have that on the agenda item for next week.
Will the deed be ready?
Yeah, I, I got a draft of it way back when already. So I can have Colin bring it up to speed and have that on next week's agenda as well.
Be good.
With Colin's coming, I am gonna try to have the twenty eighty agreement for Imagine Nation Station on, also I sent it to Colin earlier. So hopefully he'll have read through it and will be able to, for us, we have to prove that as a board. So Terry, I guess I would.
No problems.
And I just gotta go to Cherokee Friday for a meeting.
Alright, Ms. Hayden.
I will try to keep it brief, but yesterday was our, um, public health meeting. Now, uh, I think, uh, uh, activity report, what I'll pass around is showing that in the month of October, hospice, uh, had twenty-six thousand more in revenue than they did in expenses. And so they're kinda going with the trend, but they're also down, you know, a few nurses, but they're managing to get more people serviced. Income was, and that's a nice change to see there. We did discuss a little bit, Ty was up there. We also, um, that in a budget year this year, we, we'd really like to see more of what they really expect to spend rather than having that, you know, half million dollar tax asking and then not really using it, giving the money back to us. And Lynn, you know, proposed and suggested that possibly down the road, they would have a negative tax asking because, you know, as, uh, people are, you know, they're not hiring back, they're really analyzing and doing a good job of if they need to really have as many people on staff. Uh, the other thing that kinda goes along with that, if you look at the program trends, um, it's kind of all over the board where, uh, as an example, back in eighteen nineteen, blood pressure taken, they did four hundred and fifty-six. Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, they did two hundred and nine. So there's programs that, um, you know, you can see they're not using some of the services as much. But on another good note, the new program that they're, uh, implementing with, with Tyler and Lynn is, says he's now got that working the way they need it to, that it's gonna identify the pro, the programs that they have. And as an example, if the program is, you know, taking twenty-five thousand of taxpayer dollars, but it's only servicing three people, they can make that decision to see if that program is really something they'd need to fund if, if the people aren't necessarily using it. And so they're, they seem kind of excited about the new program and how it's gonna attract, um, expenses and revenues and people served, which is what it's really all about. Um, I always, uh, appreciate the, trying to figure out if you're, you're, uh, you know, servicing the amount of people that makes it worth having that, uh, uh, revenue out there for. And there, there's so many grant programs and, you know, there's just a lot of moving parts with that. But I was happy to see that things are kinda taking a shift. We're making more than we're spending. So that was the highlight of that. Made a few policy changes on how they pay their, um, nurses, which I think was, was good. But, uh, those are kinda the overview subject. There's always a lot of, uh, reports from different programs, but, uh, that's the highlight of it, so.
So you feel like they're on the right track then?
I, I really tied into think it seemed more of a positive, uh.
Yeah, I think the, the additional encouragement's probably high enough here.
Yeah, there we go.
Did they say anything as far as, cause I know the public health admin flows? If like this year going forward, they analyze these different services and they're able to cut and they're at a negative or they're at zero tax asking. Are they at all thinking about, I mean, that it goes up and down, where are they gonna do in those years when they, they fall short?
We talked a little bit about, um, some of this money, and these are things I was gonna talk to Terry about. The monies that they have this year that they're turning back, if that could go into a.
General fund.
It all has to go back into the general fund.
It has to go to the general.
They'll, they'll, you know, have, having, you know, similar to what Paul has, that there's money that's there, you know, that.
Paul's different. What about it?
Isn't that a holding fund for hickams to be transferred later?
But that's department thirteen. Public health is department twelve.
Okay.
That's why we have to include you, but it was kind of, you know, seeing if they could, maybe we'll just call it self-fund a little bit for the years that they,
Right.
You know, had extra and it.
Without having to go through a budget amendment.
Right, right. And it doesn't have to.
And still, if they didn't budget for the expenditure, it would still require, even though, so now, you know, we have those fund balances. And we don't budget for the expenditure, we, it still requires a budget amendment. It's just gonna come out of fund balance, so.
And go to the general.
I mean, that money's gonna be there in the general fund. So if they do need a budget amendment, you know, some of that came from them. So it's, you know what I mean? But I just.
Part of that thought process for me is, you know, they, the way that they get their grants, they, they kind of, I've always just had that money sitting there to, to cover for into, uh, lean time where they, they're waiting to get the grants. They know they're getting it. So they don't always have to come in to keep their bills paid. Uh, and so I, I guess what the question would be, is there some creative way to, to not always have to, you know, not be short, but not have to always come in and ask for a budget amendment, which seems like you're going over your budget and spending more than you planned. But in their line of work, it's hard to say, this is exactly how much we're gonna need, cause they don't know what the grant.
I don't know how much of that you want to happen. Just gonna say that out loud.
And the reason that.
Not, nothing directed to public health. We don't want any of our departments creatively budgeting just to avoid a budget amendment, because then that takes. That takes the eyes and ears, that takes, that closes your eyes and closes your ears to stuff that's happening with county taxes.
And so does having two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars setting in that budget that we didn't really have a purpose for, you know, line itemed out. And so that's what I think I want to avoid.
They need to lower what they're budgeting.
That's kinda what I started dropping, you know, so, and I thought it was only fair to kind of lay out there that we, are we looking at a little bit different budget.
I mean, cause we all experience surprises that come about, you know, equipment failure that you couldn't have planned for.
Right, right.
Whatever it is, whatever it is. Hiring and, you know, that kinda stuff, but still.
Yep.
If they're at a negative tax asking, hypothetically, next year when we budget or. If they're at a negative tax asking, hypothetically, next year when we budget or when we budget, we just have to be conscious, or if they do go through a lean time where they can't make payroll, that.
Right.
Maybe we will, or those grants don't come in on time.
Yeah.
That we are prepared.
That's what our reserve funds for.
Right, if we look at these, these trends.
That's my point, and then, and then we still have.
Based on what I heard yesterday, rather than seeing it like this, they're gonna be able to see exactly, you know, cause look at, everything is kinda down.
No, I thought Terry brought up a good point, in my mind, I was thinking, well, if they were just budgeting like a earmark account, put a hundred thousand in there, so if they all needed it, they could get it, but then there's not oversight on that account by us, and so there could be things going on that. As long as they don't have to get a budget amendment, come here, we don't know what they're doing, so it makes perfect sense as to what you said.
If you look at what I put the question mark on there.
No, I don't think it is about that. It still gives you all oversight on those fund balances.
Exactly, and that's our job.
And that is your job.
Exactly.
No, I'm.
Lucky or not, I guess.
Zero tax asking, and next year they have to have so, I mean, that's kinda why we have a question.
Right, right, and you know, those requests at budgeting time to cut, say, ten percent, and, you know, departments want to, they're, you know, they get like hyper protective of that, you know what I mean, and it's like.
Doorway to see how the new program comes.
Well, we're just asking you not to levy for it, it's like, let's not ask our taxpayers to pay a bill that we haven't incurred yet, we haven't even dreamt of yet potentially.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, let's not do that, that's, that's why some of those requests in budget reductions are necessary.
Yeah.
Just to tighten that up and, yeah.
I think that's the reason for kinda dropping that already here in December.
Right.
It's not gonna be business as usual, hopefully that we can get a little bit closer to, and not just.
In all of our departments, not just public health, not just.
And I would have highlighted, made it easier for you, but I'm hoping that the new program that we have through Tyler is gonna identify it a little bit, uh, more key in on where we've lost services, if you look at, like, blood pressures taken, you know, there was seven hundred in eighteen nineteen and only four hundred in twenty twenty-two, does that really make any money?
Yes, sir.
You know, a lot of that all happened during COVID, you know, you saw those drops and then they never really got them back. And so, um, is, is there a reason to still have that out there if they're going to the hospital or that service just isn't needed? Cause you got a nurse on staff that's prepared to do it, but people aren't really coming in anymore, and we're still, you know, we still have the same staff.
That makes sense, so I mean, if you can get that data and really streamline the services you provide to be doing revision.
Right, 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 right. It gets away from, well, this is what we've always done, and you've got, it's kinda like mental health, you have to have somebody on staff that can do that, even though we've got two people that, that have always done it, and now we really could get by with just one, but until you see that in black and white, it's hard to, to say, and you really have to kind of understand the trends and why it is like that, you know, there's a backstory to what has happened there.
Right, and some of those expenditure searches are probably possible right now because of the way our AP system has been developed, but, I mean, the new project accounting, of course, will make it a, a lot more.
I'm waiting.
A lot more clear, so I'm glad that, that that ball is.
I think all in all.
Finally rolling pretty rapidly now.
Finally rolling, and I was waiting on that.
Had a little resistance.
We have a backup.
But it's working really good now, every, they're going through some extra training.
Yep.
I think Michelle's gonna be part of that this week, so she can understand as, as she would, uh, in, input invoices in what her step is going to be, what, and, um, Lynn and his department, they're learning more about the reports and they're sharing reports on Tyler rather than through email or printing them, I mean, they can print them when they get them.
Maybe stop in an island.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, we're all part of the same system, so we have to understand how each other does things, so, and that'll be good.
They're back, they're also cross-training, which has been something, you know, since I got on the board. I really was surprised to find out that certain people might work from home, even if they're sick, they have to, have to work because they're the only ones that know how to do it. And I'm like, you know, if you're sick, you need to have a sick day, and there, if it's such an imperative report, there really needs to be a backup and not say you're working from home because you've got this to do and you're the only one that knows how to do it, a good organization has a backup. I really want these people to take a sick day, get better, don't be working from home.
How do they take vacation then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know.
They have to plan their vacations around, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's easy.
I know, I know.
Uh, and those are the things that I think maybe we're, we're moving things along a little bit to, to realize, and so he has brought, you know, one of the gals in to kind of work together to implement this, so when he does get ready to retire, that it's not a, uh, nobody's ever seen it before, nobody has a clue, and then we start all over with a square one, so I felt like we had positive, moving forward kind of, uh, movements in my personal self.
Super good.
Yep, so.
I thought it was a good meeting.
Was long.
Yeah, it was long.
Uh, but, uh, a lot of.
And it, her and I didn't have nothing to do with that.
No, no, no. I asked maybe a few more questions than I had to.
I'm not hard to believe.
I know, we do.
Maybe I've been in.
Twenty minutes ago.
All right, all right, well, okay, so that's kind of if, uh, that I'm being timed out. I did have somebody, uh, call me, another insurance company, I wonder if they could give, uh, bids to us, if they could be involved in the insurance process, and I said, find out.
Where are they from?
Uh, Dowsity.
Oh.
And I tried to find out, but I didn't, you know, that's just.
Yeah, man, it is bid.
Laying it out there.
It's might be.
There's a lot to it, though.
Uh, yeah, and I, I guess that's how we find out, we, yeah, so I'll let you know a little bit more about that, but.
I guess that.
I've been here almost four years and I'm still learning all of the words.
Oh, my God, so am I, but, um, yeah, that's it, I yield my time, or make emotional adjournment, whatever comes first.
Well, we have citizens Zoom point first, but.
Oh.
I don't see anybody on Zoom, I think more people are actually watching the meetings afterwards.
Yes.
Right.
Uh, is there anything else to be brought before the board, I guess, nobody out in Zoom land, Michelle, you have something?
I just have a small thing, so Michelle's starting to work on the budget paperwork to go out to our departments. What would the board like to give direction, what kind of direction?
I love it when they have it kind of marked where the, the department hit, that so you don't always have to say, or look like this and find out where they're at, cause the one that I was turning back in, yeah, the index, you know, where it says.
She had the numbers on there last year, I asked her if she was gonna do that yesterday.
So I guess I'm, let me be more specific.
Yeah.
I'm thinking percentage of increase.
Two percent increase or what?
Yeah, are you thinking, you know, there's, sorry, no, I appreciate what you said too, cause we'll make sure that your books are more easily ever findable. But I didn't know, I know, we don't know much about the new House File seven eighteen, how it's gonna affect us.
I think that's the imperative part of this whole process, we need to understand that we have no idea, we're expecting a five hundred thousand dollar cut.
That's our expectation.
So we need to kinda plan accordingly, so.
I would like to bring out a point, especially since you guys haven't had your comp board meeting yet.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I know, maybe I should have said this last week. I was actually looking through, especially the stuff you just sent out, but I dug into some old stuff, which was the same thing with just last year. And you know, you guys all do the same thing, like Dave brought up, Carroll County did that this time, but it looked to me like Crawford County's the only board that does that, or the only courthouse that does that consistently, where all of you have the same pay raise.
Are you referring to the three offices on the second floor?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
The, the second floor, how's that?
Yeah.
The three, the three.
Treasure.
In any event, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I noticed that every other county, the way it looked, I mean, I looked through them, and there was, there was no county where you were earning, that your department was earning the same as the treasurers or the recorders. So apparently they're taking care of that in the comp board, and not, and there isn't just two different numbers coming out as well.
Two years ago, I had Carroll was all over the board with, with they came.
Exactly. I think.
Whatever, I mean, that's our.
And, and I just think that that's something that should be discussed at that board, Mr. Shur.
I called you last night, let you know about the record.
Okay, I appreciate it.
We tried to get you guys up to info on, you know.
Somewhere that I appreciate.
That's how we used to do it, Kyle wanted it that way.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it. My, my new phone didn't, had a, a sleep thing on it that I was unaware of, so I didn't.
I very much know Kyle, he didn't get a hold of you guys.
He did, so, yeah, so we're good.
Slap you guys though.
Thank you, sir.
Everybody's okay, we checked out, we're just lucky.
You get your cut up on your sleep?
What a deal.
Probably a late night, wasn't it?
Oh, it was a late night, yeah, everybody's okay except for one.
No, it wasn't as late as an all-night catfishing tournament.
Now that I couldn't stay late.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Uh, where was I? Oh, anyway, I, I think that if, if you guys are ever wanting to do stuff like that, I mean, I don't know why that board does that, I guess I'm still learning that process too. I mean, if there's stuff that needs to be adjusted, but part of the, part, part of the, part of the struggle, I think, for this board, well, I think I have a suspicion, but I'm not gonna make any accusations. I, I, I think part of the struggle this board has with, with salaries is because when, let's just say you come in and they were wanting to give you a ten, wait, we, we owe you, it is, doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that your, your office seems to have a lot to do at times. You know, and, uh, I mean, so when I was looking through that, them salaries kinda reflected that, and I assumed some of that was because of longevity and, and service as well too, time in service, as we'd call it, but I think this board had, where our struggle is, is when we give you a pay raise, it gave your whole department one.
Right.
And the same thing over here, I mean, and that's a big department. And then across there, which is a lot smaller department, but it's still, everybody in there gets a pay raise at the same time, so it's so hard to manage the budget from our perspective when we have almost zero control over salaries, at least on this floor. And, and I think that's probably where we struggle with, with, when we see that a big pay raise come in for somebody, you know, I mean, I, I understand that the, you know, the, the back the blue thing made sense to me, I mean.
Well, that trick biased us in the ass.
But it, but it did bias in the backside because we weren't prepared for it, you know, was it, was it, you know, and that, that our, our elected officials from Des Moines like to brave blame ISAC for our issues, but, and, I mean, I don't know who you blame, should we have known that, you know, ignorance of laws, no excuse, whatever you wanna say. However, it did bite us, and I, I think that's what we need to really be considering at that comp board is if all them things come to us before, it's easier for us to probably decide. But then the other thing is, is if yours comes at a, or let's just say hers came at a ten percent, I mean, we just gave a ten percent raise to the entire room over there, and that's, that's hard on the budget, I know, so I think that's, I don't know, I don't, I, I'm, I guess I'm looking for suggestions on ways to correct that, if, if it can be, I don't even know if it can.
I don't know if it can.
I mean, like, I don't know if pass boards made it hard for you guys to look after your people and you were losing.
Tie the short list, sorry, Jeanette.
That's all right.
Wake control budget.
Yeah.
Anyone on the second floor, any elected official, Steiny, could come in and want twenty percent raises.
Yeah.
We cut their budget by ten, twenty percent, and they don't have the room for the wage, they have to make up their deci- decision, do I need that miss, or do I give that pay raise?
And I just skip it, what goes up.
Your original question in my mind is this.
Doesn't.
Notify these people that we're expecting a major shortfall, prepare your budgets.
Accordingly.
Accordingly, and after the initial review, if needed, be prepared for a cut. How's that sound?
That is spot on of what I was thinking.
In the world, the only thing that, uh, business truly, truly has control over is the wages. You have no control over your insurance increases, you have no control over the cost of, um,
Supply and materials.
The cost of the, the heat, the.
Yep.
Anything other than wages, we have no control over, and, you know, I, I think.
Limited control.
Limited control, maybe.
Yeah. And we've already seen it, we've seen it happen in Paul's department, we, public health, we haven't replaced physicians.
Because.
Because of potential budget shortfalls, but we also haven't gotten to the point yet, I don't wanna get to the point where you have to cut so drastically that you lose them.
Yeah.
Or you lose services.
Because then you lose services, cause you lose the people that give those services.
Uh, if we think the lines are long, you know, as people are waiting, just wait until you can no longer have four people waiting, you only have, or, uh, four clerks, you only have three, because everybody was making so much that you couldn't afford to keep everybody on, and that's what we really wanna avoid, is, is having to cut staff and we're gonna keep, I, I.
Right.
I think it's, I think it's important that, that they know, they hear, I don't know, I think it's important they know what we were act, I don't know if you'd call it a directive, but we had the state reps at our District Three, and when they came back with the comment that that's your job.
Not my job, your job.
It's your job to, to, to manage that budget, so if you gotta make cuts, you gotta make cuts. I mean, basically, that was the, it wasn't that they're, they're gonna try to find ways to help us through this, it's to clean it up, we don't care. I mean, it was, it was tough love, I suspect you would call that.
Some of this, though, as we, I take my taxes and my vehicle registration all online now, it's just about twenty-five cents to sort of, get home and do it. How much is that? I mean, the staff hasn't changed less, but there's a lot of that getting done, they used to have to come into that office.
Yeah, well, remember when.
So that's where, I'm for, I don't, unfortunately, if need arises, she might have to make them decisions. I don't, I mean, that's her office to decide, but here's, here's your two hundred thousand, make it happen, not get anymore.
Well, remember when.
We can't afford her, we don't have.
Yeah, right.
Don't have.
Remember they used to stuff the taxes themselves, that was part of it, now that's all, uh, housed, housed out.
Yeah.
And so, you know, if anybody that used to work there remembers that was a big, well, even like for us at the bank, I remember when part of our jobs as tellers was to stuff the statements, we, you know.
And it could, the same thing in secondary roads, it may be a point we don't have.
Two thousand eight.
Funds to buy a four hundred thousand dollar.
Two thousand eight, we went through that.
Right.
Well, he's, he's been.
Put more miles on and you trade in less or whatever. Not just that department, but other vehicles in the county.
Oh, yeah, I see a lot of new, new vehicles driving around, stupid, stupid.
I know we've talked about it in my office.
So, to go to your point, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't budget more than you did last year. What, what do you think?
Well.
I mean, we know we can only get two percent, but our, but our.
We don't know what our growth is and what we're gonna.
We don't know what our inflation costs are, that's why I said if they budget more than they had last year.
And I will say this, it ain't our job is sit at this board and.
Do their budget.
You know, everybody says we can't even, don't even pay with, I don't know how many trips you go on or what kind of boat you have or nothing, is that's the taxpayer's responsibility? Do you worry about that? No. We're here to provide a wage, and if you can't afford it, I guess, you know, you're gonna have to look somewhere else. We just gotta be clear to them that this is probably gonna be the tightest year in most recent. Gonna hope we're wrong, but it's not shaping up to be.
I don't know, I don't even know.
Budget, budget accordingly.
That's what I'm trying to say, what, I'm, that's just, I'm, I'm assuming you're looking for a number, is that right?
I don't think you have to give them a number, I think you just.
Right, budget accordingly, knowing that. What Kyle said.
Exactly.
Be prepared to be cut.
Don't need that.
Be prepared to be cut.
And they might, and it may be cut anyways, if we don't have it, we don't have it, right? And I'm not willing to deplete our general fund.
The true managers come out.
To the point where we don't have that ability to flow wages for six months, I mean.
You know, and I, I would also like to bring this up, though, those, those departments that are separate boards or something, I mean, if there's any influence from this board towards that, you know, like whether it's the assessors or whatever, I mean, we, that, that, they also need to be doing this because a, as we well know, when taxes go up, they don't look at the school board, they don't look at the assessors, they don't even, they look at the city, they look at us, you know.
We got ultimate control.
But I think.
That's what they think anyway.
No, we don't.
I'm gonna go downstairs. Committee for the landfill.
Oh.
Are they doing their thing?
Yeah, they wanna get started, so.
Okay.
I gotta do it, I mean, you guys can finish up.
Motion was made. Go here, second.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Mulbarr, all favorite, thanks to Batanai.
Aye.
Pose no, Gary will tie it, Harry, thank you, have a great.
Good work, good work, Dave.
I'm gonna basically use his language.
What he said, yeah.
Yeah.
That works for me.
Yeah. That affecting a major shortfall, setting budget.